This is Sleckman's meeting for July 14. We just came back from executive session discussing collective bargaining and workman's compensation settlement. Announcements. And I'll do the, actually, I need to, Bernard, Sleckman Bernard Green will be joining us remotely at some point in the, during the meeting. Oh, he's on now? Okay, so, ah, okay, thank you. So pursuant to this board's authority under 940 CMR 2910 Perrin 8, Sleckman Green will be remotely, participating remotely via telephone due to geographic distance. There's a quorum physically present and all votes taken will be recorded by roll call. Sleckman Green will be allowed to vote. There's a checklist of all the requirements for remote participation which I've reviewed and I certify that all of the requirements have been met. Announcements. Next Wednesday at the Senior Center, 3 o'clock, there's a cable ascertainment hearing and I would encourage everybody who's interested in the topic to attend. The Comcast license is up for renewal and we'd love to hear from the public as to what they think is right about Comcast and what they don't think is right about Comcast and what we ought to be negotiating for. So I would encourage everyone to attend. There'll be another one in the evening in September and the date will be announced. So there'll be two ascertainment hearings and that's part of a long drawn out process renegotiating our cable agreements. So I understand we have someone signed up for public comment, Mr. Weiss. And the rules are three minutes. The members of the board typically don't comment except that there's a question of clarification.
I'm Len Weiss, a member of the Advisory Committee. Here's how I feel after its recent meeting and yesterday's correspondence which raises questions and resolves little. Presciently, the meeting began with the discussion of speaking up when inaccurate information crossed our paths. My trust in the town's management has been severely damaged by a failure to disclose information about the recycling contract. Disciplined assumptions are inherent to financial planning. Good faith estimates are refined with better information. As time passed, it was apparent that the actual cost would exceed the budgeted amount by more than $200,000. The contract was signed before or during town meeting, yet management withheld this information from the Advisory Committee, from town meeting, and from you. The matter only came to light with a proposal to plug the hole with the reserve fund transfer. The light came from Advisory Committee questions, not transparent disclosure. I sense a failure to appreciate the seriousness of the issue and its damaging consequences. The transfer is an intellectually bad, inappropriate solution to a matter that should be understood and resolved through town meeting. In my Advisory Committee role, I place great reliance on management representations and do not expect to exercise much personal due diligence. I was a partner in a Big Four public accounting firm and an officer in public companies. I issued public financial statements and securities and dealt with rating agencies, underwriters, investors, creditors, the Securities and Exchange Commission, and federal and state banking authorities. Believe me, for these folks, integrity is in fact, and appearance is cardinal. Angela Merkel said yesterday, "The most important currency has been lost." That is trust and reliability. I cannot imagine a storyline that would justify this behavior. The matter was a layup. All that was needed was a simple heads up that a good faith estimate in the proposed budget was $200,000 below the winning contract bid and that a solution was in the works. I can only imagine that in a difficult planning process complicated by overrides and rife with political maneuvering, some folks thought withholding information was a good idea, although I cannot imagine for what advantage. It galls me that these are the same folks who piously admonished the Advisory Committee ad nauseam that its ideas violate adherence to responsible fiscal policies and practices. And incredibly, even now, this intellectually bad, inappropriate solution is wrapped in the cloak of respect for financial discipline. Service on the Advisory Committee is both a great honor and sacrifice that I have almost enjoyed thoroughly. I have worked as diligently and sincerely as I can in carrying out my responsibilities. This experience has severely damaged my trust in management. Other committee and town meeting members might feel as I do. The outside interests I referred to earlier certainly would. Your omission from the knowledge chain should make this matter important to you. Thanks for your attention.
Thank you.
Yeah, I feel that, I know we don't usually respond and I'm not going to answer specific questions, but I do feel that given the suggestions that there was impropriety and questioning the integrity of our town staff, I do want to respond and say, it is, it often happens that when we get a bid in on something that we don't like, that we negotiate over it. And that is a process that goes on for many of our contracts. It's not something we involve the Advisory Committee in. And often, we're quite successful in trying to renegotiate those. I understand with this one on the timing that the town administrator was planning on bringing it to the fall town meeting, so this is not an attempt to hide information or something like that. You know, I feel that the suggestion that we were all trying to sweep something under the rug in order to pass the override is, was really quite offensive.
Yeah, I'll just make a clarification that, you know, in the preparation of the budget and lead up to town meeting, things change, assumptions change, and then there are various judgments made as to when we engage in the process. And in this case, it wasn't clear as to the contract amount until the last night of town meeting after the budget was set. And we still didn't know even though the contract was set as, what the effect on the total budget would be because there were other moving parts besides this contract on that budget line. We didn't know that until after town meeting. So, you know, people on this side of the table, you know, we try to act in good faith and we try to use our best judgment. And sometimes you might look back and say, gosh, if I had it to do over again, I'd do it a little differently. But there certainly was no bad faith on the part of anyone that I know and certainly not on the part of the town administrator who I have total respect and admiration and respect his judgment.
As do I.
Thank you.
I agree.
So, okay, next item on the agenda is the minutes for Tuesday, June 30. I have a couple.
I gave Kate a bunch of mind changes already.
I have some edits as well.
By the way, I did not receive the minutes in my electronic packet, so I reserve the right to make some.
Why don't we just hold the vote?
We should hold them, yeah.
We'll hold the vote until next, next meeting, which will be on August 4th. So you can have a chance to review the minutes, Bernard?
Okay, great.
That sound good?
Sounds great.
Okay, so now we have a question.
Can I just, on the announcements and things we kind of.
Sure, sure.
First of all, I want to remind people that the farmer's market is going on. It's been very vigorous. I was there last week, not this past week, but the week before. And the other thing was, I want to say that we have, we're sort of getting to finalizing the plans on the devotion school project. And I want to just compliment, we have a number of architects in town. Steve Hyken, Sergio Madiglioni, Bob Cook from the planning board, I don't know whether Bob's an architect or not, but George Cole from the building commission and Angela Hyatt from the Advisory Committee, who really contributed a tremendous amount as we've worked to kind of improve on the design. And, you know, then there's those of us who just give our layman's, we know what we like opinion to the architects. But they're doing a good job trying to amalgamate all the many pieces of advice that they've heard and so I wanted to let people know that is coming to fruition and there should be, there's going to be a design advisory team convened by the planning board. So there will be some public process there, so if people are interested in seeing more about that design as it's being submitted to the MSBA, you know, they should keep an eye out for the planning board's design advisory team meetings.
Okay, so moving on to in the miscellaneous calendar, question of accepting a gift in the amount of $1,000 from the Friends of the Brookline Public Library in connection with the poet laureate, Mr. Faison.
Good evening. Again, more money for the poet laureate program, this time from the Friends of the Brookline Public Library in the generous amount of $1,000 that you just had to vote to accept.
Like to thank the Friends of the Library, they do a great job.
Please, please send them a letter on our behalf. Thank you.
Yeah, okay, any discussion? Okay, so I'll move acceptance of the gift of $1,000 from the Friends of the Brookline Public Library in connection with the poet laureate program. All those in favor, Sleckman Daley.
Aye.
Sleckman Franco.
Aye.
Sleckman Heller.
Aye.
Sleckman Green.
Aye, and I'd like to also add that, is the useful for the board, they have them as poet laureates.
Yeah, okay.
That's one point.
Sure. And the chair votes aye, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item is accepting a grant in the amount of $240,000, a big one, as part of the D O E R Green Communities Competitive Grant Program to authorize the town administrator to sign the grant contract. Ms. Goff.
Good evening. Now that we are a green community and we've spent our first allotment of grant funding, we're now able to apply for the competitive grant program.
Yeah, I think it's a grant application, not, not a contract, right?
Well, we received notice that we did win.
Oh.
The award for three projects that we submitted. Brookline High School LED lighting, Tappan Street Gym and Pool LED lighting, and then we'll be putting some LEDs in some of the parks that Erin is interested in. So all we're looking for is, as the contract documents come in, we need the board to authorize the town administrator to, to sign the grant documents.
This is great, yeah.
Yeah, let me just ask, I know we started our project, oh, and Peter Ditto's here, of retrofitting our streetlights to be the LED because it was more cost effective. How are we going with that? And is this something we can apply for future grants on or not?
So the capital funding that Peter's program is for is for the streetlights and the grant program that we have here are for the lights in the park system, which was not part of the original project, but Peter can speak to.
Yeah, I just wonder how that's, how that's coming and when we'll see those savings mounting up.
Yeah, just a quick update, as you may remember, we are doing this in-house and at this point in time, we're about 40% complete.
Okay, do you have to do the whole poll or you just do?
No, actually, it's a pretty quick exchange. It's basically dropping the hood of the Cobra head, or actually taking the entire Cobra head off and there's a socket that you just slide in there into the receiver and then pull it back up. So it's pretty simple.
Okay, great.
Is this going to, acceptance of this money going to save us money in the CIP, either on the pay-as-you-go portion or bonded?
So these are, these are projects that Charlie had already kind of started working with utilities on, so to, to the extent that these grant funds will then allow him to do additional energy conservation projects.
Got it.
So it stretches our dollars.
Correct.
This is, this is more than what's in the CIP for.
Yeah, it's a little bit more than.
Yeah, right, pretty good. Okay, so I'm going to, I'm going to move acceptance of the grant in the amount of $240,000 as part of the D O E R Green Communities Competitive Grant Program and to authorize the town administrator to sign the grant contract. All those in favor, Sleckman Daley.
Aye.
Sleckman Franco.
Aye.
Sleckman Heller.
Aye.
Sleckman Green. Still with us? Okay, and the chair votes aye. Next item is a question of authorizing the submittal of a wrap reimbursement request in relation to the hot mix asphalt repairs in the amount of $144,025.10. This is the, the end of winter pothole contract?
Yes, it is. This is the, the work was completed by June 30th, was, which was one of our requirements. And now since it's been completed, we're requesting that a reimbursement request be submitted to Mass Highway. Our next threshold is to get all the paperwork into them by the end of July, and then we'll be completed.
Questions, comments from the board? Okay, seeing none, I'll therefore move authorization of the submittal of a wrap reimbursement request in relation to, to the hot mix asphalt repairs contract in the amount of $144,025.10. All those in favor, Sleckman Daley.
Aye.
Sleckman Franco.
Aye.
Sleckman Heller.
Aye.
Sleckman Green.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Next item is a committee of seven.
Now there's fiber reinforced.
I'm sorry, I skipped one. Mr. Ditto's up again. Question of awarding and executing fiber reinforced rubberized crack sealing in the amount of $23,772 with Superior Seal Coating Ink of Andover. Mr. Ditto.
Yes, on Thursday, May 28th, we opened two bids for this project and Superior Seal Coating Ink was low. Second bid was Seal Coating Ink. Often get those backwards sometimes, but those are the two major players in this type of construction and we will be doing about 25 streets with this money and a variety of locations throughout the town. And the base, the theory behind this crack sealing is to keep water from migrating down into the face of the pavement. And particularly in wintertime when it freezes, it tends to heat the pavement up. So it's basically a waterproofing type of construction and it's one of the methods of pavement management that we use throughout the year.
So this is, it's like a tar that's spread out on the, on the street?
Yeah, it comes out as a hot liquid asphalt and it kind of melts its way into the crack and usually overnight it hardens enough so that it doesn't get sticky and picked up.
So this is applied to the cracks as opposed to the whole street?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
It's the, as far as too much as wide.
So when we see a kind of shiny black streak on the road, is that what this is?
It's that lovely stuff you see in the street.
Right.
So I note that the winning bid is less than we estimated the work was going to cost. Is that alarming to us at any level or are we just fortunate to?
No, actually, you know, we have a pretty good track record in estimating and we're happy to see this below our estimate, but we felt that our number was a solid number.
It's too bad, that didn't happen with devotion school. At least we'd get some real dollars there as opposed to.
We hope this is beginning of a trend.
Actually, we don't know that. We don't have final bids on devotion school, so we don't know. Okay. So I'm going to move.
I think Bernard may be trying to say.
I'm sorry, Bernard?
Yep. I'm still here.
Okay, okay. I'm going to move award and execution of contract regarding fiber reinforced rubberized crack sealing in the amount of $23,772 with Superior Seal Coating Ink of Andover. All those in favor, Sleckman Daley.
Aye.
Sleckman Franco.
Aye.
Sleckman Heller.
Aye.
Sleckman Green.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
And the next item is appointing a committee of seven. This is for the pool repair program. Do I have any volunteers? This is a one-shot deal, a one-meeting commitment. Hey Bernard, have you ever done one of these?
Have I ever dealt with one of these?
Have you ever been on a committee of seven?
A committee of seven, not in the context of Brookline.
Okay, I think you've just been volunteered.
Thank you for stepping up, Bernard.
Yeah, this is, it's.
I knew I shouldn't have gone on vacation.
Yeah, this, don't worry about it.
Yeah, I know, I'm bad.
You do have to, you do have to chair the committee though, I'll just tell you that.
We will work efficiently then.
Right. Okay, so question of appointing committee of, so I'm going to move appointment of the committee of seven for the following project and appointing Bernard Green to serve as chair.
And Ken Kaplan, Karen Brezlosky, George Cole, John Bain, Dan Lyons, and Jim Carroll.
Those are the names. All those in favor? Sleckman Daley.
Aye.
Sleckman Franco.
Aye.
Sleckman Heller.
Aye.
Sleckman Green.
I guess I have to stay on it.
Yeah, I guess so. And the chair votes aye. Thank you for the assist, Sleckman Daley. And now we have a few temporary alcoholic beverage licenses. I've gone through them and note that the, the applications appear to be in order and.
They could just do them all together.
Yeah, and the police department has signed off on them. So any questions or comments, I'll do this in omnibus fashion. So I will move granting a permit to sell alcoholic beverages, non-sales on town property to Lars Anderson Auto Museum in connection with the following events to be held at 15 Newton Street Beer and Wine, a corporate summer party on July 16, 2015, 3:30 to 8:30. All kinds alcohol for wedding reception on July 25, 2015. It's States 2014 in the calendar. I presume that is an era, from 5 to 11. I will also move the question of granting a temporary all kinds alcoholic beverage license to the Enunciation Greek Orthodox Cathedral, James Cassellis, director, in connection with the following events take place at 162 Goddard Avenue. A dinner on July 17, 2015, 7 to midnight. Wedding reception, July 18, 6 to midnight. A 15th birthday party, I presume they're not serving to the 15-year-old, July 25, 2015, 6 to midnight. And lastly, I'm going to move granting a temporary wine and malt alcoholic beverage license to the Puppet Showcase Theater in connection with the Puppet Showcase Puppet Slam Event to be held on July 18 from 8 to 11 at 32 Station Street. All those in favor, Sleckman Daley.
Aye.
Sleckman Franco.
Aye.
Sleckman Heller.
Aye.
Sleckman Green.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So I think we've exhausted our miscellaneous calendar. And moving ahead to our regular calendar, question of authorizing the filling of a couple of positions in the recreation department. Ms. Paradies.
Good evening, Lisa Parades, Recreation Director. I am here to gain authorization to hire two lead teachers at the school early childhood center, both in the same position, GN4.
I have a question, because I know I've been on this board too long, when it seems to me that we've authorized this like every year or something like that?
Yeah, I mean, there is an amount of turnover with the teachers, but there are, there are seven lead teacher positions there, so we do generally.
Oh, oh, I see, okay. I thought lead teacher meant lead teacher, but no, no.
Not the lead teacher.
Yeah, okay. All right, that makes more sense then.
What is the average length of stay for, do you know that, for a lead teacher?
You know, I would say somewhere between three and four years, you know? Just about that.
So I'm assuming you've checked and we're paying an appropriate rate?
Yes, yeah.
That's not the reason we constantly lose these people?
No, no, not at all. Part of it's, you know, the industry itself and then part of it is that we run a full year program, so it's not necessarily just a school year program, so.
Okay.
I will give you the admonition that the sport has been giving all department heads when they appear before us, that you do what you can to seek as diverse a applicant pool as you can and work with Dr. Gellino to, to do that.
We do, and thank you, we will.
So I will move authorizing the filling of the following vacancies in the recreation department, school division, lead teacher, two lead teachers. All those in favor, Sleckman Daley.
Aye.
Sleckman Franco.
Aye.
Sleckman Heller.
Aye.
Sleckman Green.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is a report from the, from Deborah Rivers, who's looking at me panicked that she's, we're a little early because I think she wants to project, okay.
Well, why don't we go on, is that, I think I saw the housing advisory board.
No.
People we could take it, no, no.
No, no, no. Let me just say something about the Climate Action Committee because I've been, I've been the co-chair for two years and I've just handed over the baton to Sleckman Heller and it's a great group of people who've worked very hard on coming up with a revision and updating the climate action plan, which Ms. Rivers is going to be telling us about. The first part of my tenure on the committee, the committee was kind of coming off its success in shepherding the solarized program, which was very successful in expanding the solar panels and solar arrays in Brookline. And I actually participated in that and I'm on track to have a 24, 24, 5% rate of return. It's pretty remarkable with all, with all the incentives. So we then went through kind of a transition period and, and now with, under Deborah's leadership, the committee is kind of finding, finding its, its way again. And it's, and I'm sure with Sleck, between Ms. Rivers and Sleckman Heller, this committee's going to be doing great things, so.
We hope.
Why don't you speak into the mic?
Sure. I don't intend to go through this point by point, but I wanted to kind of give an overview. Back in February, we were here, I was here and Neil was on the phone and we presented to the selectmen that we had updated the charge to the committee. And basically, that was to make our efforts a little more robust and to add a category of our concern, which is climate adaptation. And so what this is, that is projected up here and we can go through it, I'm just going to give the highlights, is that we have taken, the original climate action plan was released in December 2012 and the original thinking was that it could be a weekly and be updated, but it quickly got learned that that was not very effective. So we felt that we needed to, from time to time, update the action items in the climate action plan. And we spent a lot of time during our meetings during 2014, going through this, finding out what we had started, what was, you know, what was the progress of things. And then we, we moved a few items around and added a category for climate adaptation measures, took some items that we already had and put them in that category. And so I don't know the best way, I know you've got a lot of things on your agenda tonight, but I could just point out a few things that we have added and a lot of effort has been ongoing. Laura Curtis Hayes, our representative and. a lot of effort has been ongoing. Laura Curtis Hayes, our representative in the Planning Department, has been very proactive in keeping these items moving forward. She's been working with all the things in the Green Communities Act, and we are, we just submitted an annual report for the Spring Town Meeting. So, I think what our objective here is, is to publish this on the website so that the town can see that the action items are ongoing and that it's not just something that got done two and a half years ago and put on the shelf. So, some of these things you'll see haven't started, but other things, like we've added a few items, like Community Shared Solar, we added because after the very successful Solarize Program, several members of the committee felt that it was important to have a method for households or renters who could not put solar on their own property, have a way to tie in to having renewable energy. That's a program in progress. Now, not-
And that's a, let me just interrupt, that's a program in need of a site.
Yes.
And so, the group is seeking a site very actively, so if anyone who's watching knows of a site, you can send me an email and I can forward it to the right people, but, and the site doesn't have to be in Brookline, it just has to be in the service area, you know, the Eversource service area.
Well, can I ask a question about that? Because Eversource now can, basically, is all over the entire state, including Western Mass, so.
It's this zone.
Yeah, it's basically, it goes out to around, within the 128 zone. I don't have all those.
And it goes a little further south, like Plymouth, I believe, is in there. But anyway, sorry to interrupt.
No, that's fine. And you'll just see in here that certain things are in progress and have been funded, other things haven't been started, things like green electricity. So, we have the categories of energy efficiency, and there's been a lot of work on that. Renewable energy, one of the things on green electricity, there's the whole program that Mothers Out Front had started trying to get people to sign up with Mass Energy. And a very recent development, and this is not included in here, but a group is investigating this, I think from the Green Caucus, is community aggregation. And we may end up having a hearing on that in the fall before the town, the town meeting. So, that's not included in here yet. These are the kinds of things we're looking at.
Could I just say, could I just say one word about this Mothers Out Front effort? I was actually quite dismayed to hear that so few people have signed up for that, individuals in Brookline. So, I would make a pitch to people, it's very easy, just go to massenergy.org. You can call them, you can get their, their number online. And I've done it, and it didn't take very long. And I think this month I paid, you know, fifteen dollars or something, in addition to my regular electric bill. And that gives you the peace of mind of knowing that you're, you're getting your electricity from a renewable source.
Kathleen Scanlon, who is one of the leaders of that Mothers Out Front group, is now a member of the Climate Action Committee, and I think that she's definitely pushing forward on that.
Right. Well, I would hope that, that people do sign up, because N-Star Green has ended, so you can't take advantage of it in that way. And this is a, unless we go to community aggregation, I don't know of another way you could, and you'll have your own solar, I don't know of another way you can be, have renewable energy, you know, and it's a very reasonable cost, really.
I'll second Selectman Heller's comments. I signed up as well, and I'm even more energy efficient. It cost me, I think, two dollars and seventy cents last month, so it's not necessarily a large expenditure, but certainly an important philosophical action that you're taking.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, since you mentioned Kathleen and that effort, I noticed under, on A-10, School Coordinators, you say not started, but that's actually, Kathleen Scanlon and those guys are part of a big effort at Lawrence School. So, at least at Lawrence, there's a vigorous group doing these efforts at the school level. And I, I think you may find that there are things underway at some of the other schools, and it's just a question of connecting them into your network, I think. Because, so that half the work may be done for you already, is what I'm suggesting.
So, the other thing I just wanted to specifically mention is that we, we made a couple of changes. We incorporated some stuff that used to be in a category called Food and Agriculture into Consumption and Solid Waste. And into that, the Pay As You Throw project is, like, being considered and is, looks like it's going to go forward in 2016. The Commercial Recycling, which wasn't originally part of Consumption and Solid Waste, got adopted in 2013 because it was part of a warrant article that got passed in the fall of 2014. So, that's an added item. And then we created this new category for Climate Change Adaptation. And into that, we moved permeable pavement, open space protection, and urban forest. And back in February, during our snowden period, as part of Climate Week, we had members of the town, Tom Brady, Alan Balsam, and, and actually, all the planning work that had been done by MAPC, presenting the kind of efforts that the town is making in terms of climate adaptation. And I think that's very strong, and we're continuing to coordinate with them and follow up with them. So, basically, we may add, we'd like to keep this, like, an ongoing update, and it's just at times upload it to the site. And so, the, even though this is still a work in progress, the group voted in our June meeting to come and present this to you and see if it was all right to upload. If you have comments, we'd be happy to try to incorporate them. I just wrote down the two that you made. And obviously, our meetings are open to the public. We've had quite a bit of time spent on having public hearings for warrant articles, and I think that's been a helpful forum for people to hear the sides of the issue. We expect that this community aggregation seems to have a lot of thought surrounded, and so I think having a public hearing on that in the fall will be, you know, something that will be supported.
You know, one of the things, in helping compile this list with the group, one of the things that hit me is how many parts of the town are doing something and contributing to the, to the whole climate change approach and helping with the issue? Selectman Daley?
Yeah, I'm going to just say on, on the Taxi Fuel Efficiency, it's item A-26 on your list, where you're saying require taxi vehicles to be new vehicles that are on the approved list. That's something that, they are regulated by the Transportation Board, and the, we can't really say require, I mean, we could do a warrant article, I suppose, and require it that way, but they, they try to balance a number of factors about service to handicapped people, and, and they have a number of factors they're balancing. So, I, I would think that rather than say require, it would be promote or encourage, you know, to, to try to get that into everyone's mindset, but.
I don't, and I don't have the latest on what the Transportation Department is doing, but I think-
Yeah, but it's actually the Transportation Board, which is a citizen committee that we appoint. They, they never necessarily do what we suggest after we appoint them.
Yeah, and there's a lot of activity going on with taxi cab regulation.
Yeah, I mean, but they, but they, I will say that there is sort of a difficult job there. There's a number of factors, like service to elderly and handicapped, and, and, you know, that, and that they're balancing out, along with, as these cab companies are kind of certainly being hit by the Uber phenomenon. So, you know, I, I, I don't, I don't even think it's within our purview to require that, unless we have a-
We can require through regulation, I think.
Yeah.
Just like we can require that one out of every 10 cabs be handicapped accessible.
Yeah. I'm just saying, I'm not sure that's the level, that this board wants to interfere with their, their regulation of that business to that extent, and that maybe saying encourage or promote or something would be better at this point.
Let me take that point and sort of zoom back, zoom up 10,000 feet. It seems like this list overlaps with a number of other committees' work. We've just talked a little bit about the Transportation Board, we've talked a little bit about the Pageus Row Effort, which I know that the Solid Waste Advisory Committee is working on. So, sort of a two-part question for you along those lines. How did this list come together?
This list was generated back before I was on the committee, by the initial group of the Climate Action Committee. They generated the whole Climate Action Plan, and this was an appendage to the Climate Action Plan that was published. And some of those members are still serving on the committee, others are not. So, this is actually, much of this language, except where you see strikeouts, actually is what's existing on the website. I, I think if there's a concern about how this is coordinated, we could state that in the actions.
But Selectman Franco, you should know that the membership of this committee is made up of representatives of many of the boards and commissions you see on this list, the Conservation Commission, the Transportation Board-
Building Department.
Building Department. So, Planning, Planning Board has a, has a rep. So, you know, that was recognized when, when this committee was set up, that there would be a lot of overlap. And really, this committee is, is serving kind of as a coordinating body, a clearinghouse, kind of an idea group.
So, would it be fair to say what's on this list is sort of the top priorities of the relevant committees around town? Or is it more accurate to say the issues on this list are sort of the priorities of the individuals that sit on the Selectman's Climate Action Committee?
Maybe with the, how the initial list got arrived at, is that the initial committee went through a number of brainstorming ideas and narrowed it down to 39 action items. And what I would like to suggest is that perhaps treat this as something that if you guys have comments on how this appears, maybe submit them to Laura Curtis Hayes and myself and Nancy, and we will do a further update and then maybe send it back to you for, before it gets published, just, you know, a further update of what makes sense to put in there. Because I think we should be careful about what gets posted on the website. You know, we don't want to put information there that we're not following up on. And I know you have a long agenda tonight, so I'm not trying to draw this out. So, if you feel comfortable with that, we certainly, as a committee, would feel comfortable.
So, let me provide one comment now, and I will certainly memorialize this in the morning to you, Laura Curtis Hayes and Selectman Heller. The, in the Climate Change Adaptation section, I would love to see mention of things like green infrastructure, which I know the Complete Streets Committee is working on. I think that's sort of a natural thing to fit in that, that category of this document, and would encourage that we examine and take a look at it.
So, if you look in the action items, it says enhance to include green infrastructure, collaborate with Conservation Commission, and, and also talks about the pilot project. So, but if you'd like that line to be stronger?
Well, I would say that that's specific to permeable pavement. I would also encourage us to take a look at water retention in tree wells and those sorts of efforts as well.
I don't think, I don't think we need a vote on this. I think the consensus sensing is this looks pretty good. And so, go ahead and-
And, and I think maybe we should say maybe by the end of the month, if you, if you have comments, we'd certainly be happy to get those incorporated, or at least have a back-and-forth dialogue about whether it's appropriate or not.
Sure. Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, next item on the agenda is the Housing Advisory Board Update, and this is a result of response to Article 17, the last town meeting. And I know the, a group combined, made up of representatives of the Housing Advisory Board and, and the Planning Board has been working on this. And I see this as the beginning of a conversation, a community conversation on, on how to respond to some of the pressures on the town with respect to 40B developments and the, the possible production of a housing production plan, which is one of the ways we can attain a safe harbor under 40B. But that housing production plan, as we're going to hear, is going to require us as a board, the Planning Board and the Housing Advisory Board as boards too, but broader, a broader conversation in, in the community that we're all going to be leading and participating in. And, and that conversation may be a difficult one and a controversial one. So, with that intro, Mr. Blood and Ms. Hamlin, floor is yours.
Thank you, Selectman Wasinski. Well, since Article 17 designates the HAB and the Planning Board as the key participants in the implementation of Article 17, we're both here to link together, to hip, to speak with you. And as, as you know, the, the original impetus for Article 17 and some public effort to try to address some of the issues regarding Chapter 40B development came from now, Selectman Heller. So, we're here as a result of all those things. We're, we're here, we asked to be on, on your agenda at this particular point for, for two reasons. One, as you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, the, to provide an update, and two, to, to ask the board for, for two things. One, I think, is going to be formal and one perhaps informal, and that is to, to approve the, the completion of an RFP, which I'll speak, speak about further in a moment, regarding the, a housing production plan. And second, in relation, direct relation to that, to approve formally the, the preparation of a grant application, which would have to come back to you for final approval, where the state can, can help with some of the funding of the cost of, of doing that. As you know, Chapter 40B gives developers the right to go to the state and override town zoning. If the town hasn't, or our town or any town achieved a 10% threshold of its total housing stock, recognizes affordable housing under the state's, the state's rules. And in that case, the state can issue what's known as a comprehensive permit whereby the developer can, can exceed local zoning limitations and build mixed income, affordable housing, but mixed income housing where 20 to 25% of the total rental or owner is, is officially affordable. Our current concerns in the town about Chapter 40B, beyond the, the HAB's longstanding interest in affordable housing, have come as a result of several proposed developments or actual developments that have been not considered welcome in the sense of their intrusion on existing established neighborhoods, or their excessive size or inappropriate design. Brookline has, despite best efforts, which the state recognizes, been more or less stuck at about 8% of our 10% goal for some years. Recent developments, however, have brought us more into a closer- Recent developments, however, have brought us more into, closer to the 9% range if one counts everything that is in the pipeline, both those projects that are liked and accepted and those that aren't. And what, there seems to be a consensus as well that's triggering, I think, our attention to this and hopefully all of yours, is the fact that the market is extremely strong and active, rental the most, but housing in general, where there are just a lot of things that are being talked about in the way of possible 40Bs here, there, and everywhere else, where the town has little or no control at the moment of even guiding these things. So, from the town's perspective, as well as the HABs, I'd say our objectives are, first of all, to advance affordable housing in terms of production and preservation, and at this point, to achieve the 10%. We're now within the 9% or a little over, puts us within what we're seeing is about 200 affordable units to achieving the 10% outright. However, there is another goal is to achieve an annual rate of progress whereby the state would give us, as you mentioned, Chairman Wachinski, a safe harbor, a temporary reprieve from the full power of developers to just override our current local rules. Article 17 has two parts. I'm going to really focus on one tonight, but the other one, which is of less immediate need for discussion, is the resolution of the town that we should try to seek out and work with other similarly high-density, established communities who have made a lot of progress towards the 10%, but who are facing the difficulties under the current formulations of Chapter 40B that make the minimum annual progress formula extremely difficult and extremely costly to achieve in a town where there are so few sites and where the cost of land is so, so high. The other part of Chapter, of Article 17, is that we take steps, including the creation of a housing production plan, to reach the 10% and get protections if we can along the way. Housing Production Plan is a term of art. It's officially defined in Chapter 40B, and there's a set of, kind of a template of how one of these plans is prepared. And I'm going to mention a few highlights of that, and then submitted, approved, and then submitted to the state for approval. The three essential elements of the Housing Production Plan, which, again, we're going to be asking that you approve a process to move toward, are a comprehensive housing needs assessment, number one. Number two, the creation of specific affordable housing goals. And number three, and this deserving the most attention at the moment, are implementation strategies for achieving the goals. And under those strategies, there are three key aspects. Number one, to identify specific sites in the town where the town would be receptive to receiving a 40B comprehensive permit application and all of what that implies. The second is identification of town-owned or town-controlled sites where the town would be willing to issue an RFP for affordable housing, mixed-income development. And we're familiar with that process, all of us, because that's what we did with the town reservoir up on the top of Fisher Hill. We issued an RFP, and we got responses and had quite a successful outcome.
And Kendall Crescent.
Kendall Crescent being another, yes. And the third strategy being, if we choose, proposed specific areas where the town would be willing to rezone such that housing, qualified housing could be developed without a comprehensive permit being imposed by the state, but under our own rules. And there is something, not to confuse the 40s, but we're talking Chapter 40B here, there's something called Chapter 40R, which is looked favorably upon by the state, which is a form of zoning overlay, generally includes mixed use and would include a certain percentage of affordable housing. So, that's something that would be looked at. It's not necessarily something being specifically advocated. So, in fact, in order to do this production plan, the HAB and the Planning Board and the staff, the department have looked at this and pretty well decided that the outside consulting services of a very specialized nature will be needed to work with our staff. And the Housing Advisory Board has approved, and the Planning Board has reviewed and is supporting a draft scope of services, which I think you have in your packet. This is just a draft of the tasks and the work program to be completed and disseminated. It needs further work within the Planning Department to meet all the various formal requirements of a scope of services. The key skill that we would want in the consultant is not so much specific to the state requirements of the plan. The town actually, and our own staff without help, about 10 years ago, did a very credible housing production plan. But what we need this time around that involves site selection or site designations is the help of a consultant that not only knows how these things are done, but how to help us engage with the public in the process of identifying criteria and specific sites. We think and we feel strongly that the public process, public engagement, is not something that emerges at the end of this process, but needs to begin now, or, well, in Brookline terms, August is out, so Labor Day. The best early guess, and these are guestimates, we've been, we have some people on the HAB that are in the field and have some sense of what's involved here, of a cost range of perhaps $30,000 to $50,000, should be able to buy us what we need. We'll learn more as we start engaging with possible, dialoguing with possible consultants. The Housing Advisory Board has identified three possible sources, and actually, three recommended sources of funding for this $30,000 to $50,000 range. The state, first of all, has a special rolling grant program. It's called the PATH Grant, that should be a fairly high probability of us getting $15,000 towards whatever total cost we spend would be. And the HAB is recommending the other two sources be a shared local cost between the housing trust fund and the town. For example, if there was a $45,000 consulting contract, eat three equal fifteens would be a very, a very good way to undertake this work. But I'd like to emphasize, that's not something that needs to be resolved tonight or even in the coming weeks. It would have to be resolved before an RFP was actually converted into a contract. So, if the town does decide to devote resources, and it's both staff, which would be significant, as well as the funds to creating a housing production plan, and in so doing, have some influence over 40B development, because of the market conditions and market pressures, we must move expeditiously to do this. Perhaps the worst thing we could do, maybe worse than nothing, is doing something so slowly that we've expended time and resources and have a product at the end of whatever quality, and it's too late to impact what takes place in market development. Some results of what developers have chosen so far have been good, but some have been very controversial, and, as I mentioned, that's what spawned Article 17 in the first place. One other thing that's worth noting and maybe discussing, time permitting, is that the town and the Planning Department have commissioned and have, I believe, even funded, going forward, two other studies that involve looking at town sites for possible uses, and you might even say competing uses. And so, a logical argument could be made, why don't we just coordinate all three on a similar timeline? But as I mentioned, the need to expedite this particular purpose of Article 17, we're strongly recommending, I think this is both the HAB and the Planning Board, that this particular study, if you decide to authorize it, proceed on the most expeditious possible We want to be able to give the town, the full town meeting, a meaningful progress report. It clearly isn't going to be anything final. And our goal is to at least be able to tell them that we have commissioned, defined and commissioned, the Housing Production Plan work program with the outside consultant. The Planning Department, Allison Steinfeld, has prepared a timeline in response to the boards, the two boards' requests, and it looks like it could do that very feasibly. So, we ask that you approve without a vote, that the Planning Department proceed to issue an RFP, and with a vote, that the department and staff initiate the preparation of a grant I described, and bring it back to you for final approval as soon as they have it completed.
No, I mean.
No, it's a...
Roger said it all, right?
Well, it's been an education, and I think we have, over the last month or even more, we've had several meetings together to strategize about how we're going to approach this and tackle the requirements of Article 17. And I think the Planning Board is looking to be maybe the educational component. It's been suggested that among the board, we will be looking at avenues on how to advise the consultant and to determine how we are a public face and educate the citizenry about the objectives, and maybe even some of the concepts that come through with this housing plan, so.
Yeah, I just, let me just state, to me, the focus in my mind is on the implementation strategies and the fact that we're going to have to be identifying specific sites or specific parts of town, specific town-owned parcels, and specific areas that might be ripe for rezoning. And that's going to require, I think, some substantial public process that has to be a part of this. And we have to, as a board, be willing to kind of take the deep breath and gulp and move ahead, because there's going to be some very difficult conversations. So, with that, Selectman Daly?
Yeah, my question is, Roger mentioned that we had to create specific affordable housing goals. And I know when there's a 40B project before the Zoning Board of Appeals, we are not allowed to discuss our public schools and the current overcrowding situation and how some of this development affects that. But can we, in our, certainly, I'm a co-chair of Brookline as an age-friendly community, and certainly, we have identified a huge need in town for affordable senior housing. That also fits in with my own personal concern about our public schools. But can we identify in our goals that we feel there is a significant, certainly, I mean, there is a huge need or perceived need in the community for affordable senior housing? So, can that be a goal, a legitimate goal, under this plan?
I'm sure it can. It, I think there would be some limit to, I mean, going to the absolute extreme of saying our plan is all senior housing. So, but I'm sure it can be emphasized what the need is. And perhaps that's one of the reasons why one of the first three items in the plan is an overall needs assessment. So, we're going to have to have some statistical basis, as we've done before, and our Housing Division staff is updating now, to show that as opposed to just saying we're going to do all senior housing, for example.
Ms. Steinfeld, do you have something to say?
Yes, if I could just add to that, the Housing Production Plan clearly has to be consistent with the 40B regulations. And that includes, even though it may be our preference to focus on different types of housing, it still includes compliance with fair housing law, and certainly, we cannot request one type of housing over another. So, in answer to your question, we probably could not focus on elderly housing.
Well, I've got to say, I'm significantly less enthusiastic about identifying sites. If I can't say that they should be put toward affordable senior housing.
The alternative, of course, is the drip, drip, drip that we have now of 40B developers deciding our fate.
But I think, Selectman Heller, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I think one of your possible goals was for us to seek amendments to the 40B law.
Right. When we did the, let me just first say that I really appreciate the work that Roger Blood and Mike Jacobs, Linda Hamlin, Steve Hyken, and Allison Steinfeld have done here, because they have really collaborated, met several times, working very hard toward the, toward the goal of the warrant article, which was a resolution. And many people say, oh, it's just a resolution. But they took it seriously. They are taking it seriously, and I think that's really important. The idea is to get us out of this terribly contentious and uncomfortable arena in which we're operating with several of these projects. If we don't reach the safe harbor, we're always going to have some projects that are going to give us heartburn, if you will. And that's why we need to get there. And so, we have to get there. Hopefully, we can, with a housing production plan, we can get there on our terms, and it may be that some of it can be senior, and it may not all be able to be, but at least some of it. Right now, we really, you know, haven't seen a senior development at all in the 40B.
Actually, there is one proposed.
There's one in the plan, I know. There is one.
Fifty units is what I'm hearing.
Fifteen?
Fifty.
Fifty. Oh, that's great. So, but at any rate, I mean, we really have, my view is that in this community, the process is so broken because of the difficulties, and it's, we're so built up, we have to destroy something in order to get something else. And I think 21 Crown and Shield is a good example, for instance, of the situation where we're going to lose, or we may lose, a lovely arts and crafts home at the edge of a local star district, because 40B, we're not in that 10% place, and 40B can triumph. So, we need to have a strategy to get us to 10%. I think this, you've really laid out very clearly what our options are and what our goal should be. And obviously, the RFP will clarify that even further once we get to that place. I think it's great news that we can get some of this funded by the state. And, you know, we've talked in the past about using some of the work that you had done before, say, 10 years ago, to be the basis of a production plan, and make, update it, if you will. So, that may end up being less costly than trying to start from scratch. But at any rate, I just want to commend your efforts and say that I'm all behind this, because I think that this is what we need to get us out of the place we're in right now.
If I may, I'd just like to add two comments. One is, I can assure you, the Planning Department received several requests throughout the course of a week of people exploring the possibilities of 40B. Most of those were not materialized, but there is interest, there is demand, and we see it. Secondly, I do want to expand a bit upon the Housing Production Plan. There's no question that we're required to identify sites, both public and private. But part of the plan requires that we commit to seeing that 0.5% of our housing stock is delivered, as eligible, subsidized housing, eligible housing per year. And in the case of Brookline, that's 131 units. Assuming we do, in fact, have a housing production plan prepared, we will submit it to the state with your approval. Presumably, it will be approved, but the big issue, it must be certified to really provide a safe harbor status to the town. And the only way it can be certified is if, in fact, those 131 units are delivered. If they're delivered, then we get a safe harbor for a year. So, thank you very much.
I wanted to maybe give Nancy Daly, Selectman Daly, a bit of an amplification of your question. And we're very proud of some of our members on the Housing Advisory Board and the knowledge that they bring to this subject. They don't often get to be up here for you to see any of them, because you just get tired of seeing me. But I'd like to... But I'd like to ask if Karen Kepler, who's an affordable housing attorney and has worked a lot in this area, might speak a little bit further about the senior housing versus housing goals, etc.
Sure, welcome.
Thank you, very briefly. You're both right. So fair housing laws definitely would apply to anybody's review of the housing production plan that we would produce. The plan, though, is specific to Brookline, and if we demonstrate that we have a need for affordable senior housing, that can be a component of the plan. And then it becomes a balancing test in terms of how much is the right amount. And there's not going to be an absolute, you know, 70 units is good, 72 units, not good. But we should bear in mind that when DHCD is looking at these plans, and that is the agency that has to certify it, they have a very strong concern that fair housing laws, which means not discriminating against family housing, are applied. So yes, we can have some, I think is the answer. How much is going to be what we're going to have to work out. And part of that is going to be what the study, what the criteria and the planning process results show us. But the answer will be, you know, some, but not all. Pretty much what you said, too.
I think so.
Selectman Franco.
So one of my chief objections to 40B is that it doesn't allow for thoughtful planning on the part of the municipality. So we are presented with an application to create affordable housing in a given location without regard for the type of infrastructure or town services that may be available in that area. And that's proven to be a problem in this community in the recent past, and I am concerned that it will continue to be a problem if we continue to be below the 10% threshold and subject to Chapter 40B. My question, I have several questions. And one of them relates to this, to this idea that a housing production plan is sort of the solution to the 40B problem, such as it is in this community. We just heard that we have to create 131 units a year in order to have our housing production plan certified. And I wonder if we've been able to create 131 units a year in the recent past, and if we haven't, why do we think that we're going to be able to do it for the next two or three years after a plan is developed?
Shall we have a shot at that one before going on to your next one?
Sure, sure. If you're willing to answer that one.
Make the next question more difficult.
Okay, I'll work on it.
It's a very tough threshold to meet. Our comprehensive plan, you know, from some time back, but if we did 25 to 30 units a year, that would be accomplishing something. So, and the 0.5 formula is statewide, everybody's supposed to fit in the same shoe. That's partly why Article 17 has two parts to it. And the odds may be long, but the town made an effort about 10 years ago to go up and get some recognition for not only Brookline, but other communities that are heavily built out, very densely populated, and have shown a very good record of approaching the 10%, to get some more appropriate formulation or variation on the annual minimum production. It was clear at that time that Brookline was up there all by itself, and Brookline wasn't going to get anything all for itself. So that's why Article 17 now has at least a request that an effort be made to seek out, and we've identified a list of communities, less than 10, that have similar circumstances as ourselves. And we will be reaching out to them. We've talked with the town administrator about how that might best be done at the executive level and at the planning department levels, to see if they have any interest in collaborating and approaching the state, the DHCD, with a logical, fair request that we might have a slightly different formula for getting our annual safe harbor. And that it would be generic in the sense that you would have so many years to reach from where you happen to be toward your goal on a formula which would be a kind of a sliding scale. So we'll see where that goes, but I think there's differences of opinion, even within the Housing Advisory Board, on your premise, Selectman Franco, whether the 200 units or the 131 a year are a huge impediment or just a challenge.
So I believe that we can create 131 units in a given year. I'm not sure we can do it year after year. And I want to be clear, I support affordable housing. I think that the diversity in this community, both racial, economic, all sorts, is what makes Brookline a great place to live, work, and raise a family. But the worst possible outcome, in my mind, is we go through the process of creating a housing production plan, and we're not able to live up to it. And we find ourselves, having invested 12 months, 18 months, 24 months, however long it takes to go through this process, with a plan that isn't implementable. And our sort of goal of trying to create some predictability to be able to plan for the creation of affordable housing is impossible. We find ourselves back in the same situation where we're subject to 40B application after 40B application.
Well, unless we try, you know, we're not going to be able to know whether it's achievable. Also, there are some new tools available that weren't available 10 years ago. The 40R zoning overlay, which, transit-oriented development, so that, you know, that's one tool that's not, that wasn't available. Not that it's panacea. Selectman Daly?
Yeah, I assume, Roger, when you were talking about the number of units, you were including Dummer Street already.
As done, Dummer Street, Beale Street, Hancock Village.
Yeah. So, I mean, this board and prior iterations of this board have, I think, a very good record of supporting affordable housing. And through our housing trust fund monies and, you know, various other ways that we've been supportive. I find the 131 units a year of affordable units or affordable projects huge.
It is.
And we have, for years, been trying to get to that 10% and been unable to really reach it and are getting closer now largely through a project that many find quite unpalatable. I mean, I'm willing to enter into this process, but I will say that I think there's a very good chance they could come back to us and suggest that we rezone various areas of town for affordable housing. And it will be difficult for us because there'll be areas of town where people say, I don't want any more density in my neighborhood, or my school is already overcrowded, and, you know, what the heck do you think you're doing, trying to rezone my neighborhood for more density? So I think that my concern, I guess, is by starting down this pathway and having you guys come in good faith back to us with a plan, it's going to be a plan that we're going to find difficult to impossible to proceed with.
There's, I think there's several things worth noting, and I just checked with Karen Kepler to be sure. The way the state handles it, they will not be reacting to our plan in such a specific way that they would come back and try to make specific alternative recommendations or suggestions. They will either accept it or will have another shot. The acceptance is a relatively low bar, but it doesn't get you the safe harbor. What it does get you, and this wasn't clear to me at first, is that it at least is the town being on record where a developer will get a relatively friendly reception versus a predictably unfriendly reception to a particular proposal.
Well, I will note that Hancock Village was actually, in the town's comp plan, developed a number of, I think, 2,000 or something, suggesting that that was an appropriate place for more density. And it ultimately did not meet with favor from the neighborhood.
The other thing about the 131, this is good news and bad news, very quickly. And it's a quirk in the law that goes back many years, but if it's rental housing and it's only 25% affordable, you get credit for the entire project regardless, because they wanted to promote rental housing 40 years ago. And so the good news is that the rental market is unusually strong now compared with the last 25 years I've been looking at affordable housing here. So that's where the market wants to go, is where we would probably like to see it from this standpoint. If there's bad news is that if a private development comes in that's condo, it's not 130 units in terms of development, it's four times that much because we wouldn't get credit for the 75% that was condo.
I would just say, say one thing. This town meeting passes this article. And I'm hoping, assuming, that it wasn't, you in the other district should get the housing, and I'm going to vote for it because it's a good idea. I think there's a mandate here from town meeting to pursue this because I know on the planning board, we're reactive, and we don't want to be reactive. I mean, everybody goes, you're the planning board, that means you should be planning. And really, we haven't been planning. We are reacting. And I think, you know, just working with HAB is important to look at the town in a bigger scope, a wider scope. If we're facing it, the state is forcing these issues on us, and we believe in mixed-income housing, and I'm going to call it affordable housing, then we have to get serious about it. And we have to plan it. If it's one of our values, then let's say it is and make a plan to where we would encourage it.
Yeah, okay, I'll just respond that I think we already have been very supportive of affordable mixed-income projects in town, but it's hard to shoehorn them in here. And, you know, I don't, I think you're putting the very positive spin on that town meeting vote. I read it more as a how can we get out from under 40B vote, but.
Yeah, this is it.
And this is the process that 40B has. And to me, the choice is we either start going down this road, and we may discover, as you just said, that once we start identifying sites, people start freaking out. And it's better to know that upfront.
Well, I just hope all of you who work on this don't feel betrayed if ultimately.
I've been to too many public meetings to get them to paralyze.
Okay, all right.
I'd just like to introduce one other person who was going to make a couple of comments on what he's hearing. The original HAB creation, thank you, David Treach, structured our board as having to have certain people designated to sit on our board, one of which is a planning board member must always sit on our board. So now we have an article which makes that look very prescient because we have an article that requires joint collaboration of the two boards. Steve Hyken is that guy at the moment, and he's going to make a couple of comments.
Thank you, Roger. I just wanted to add something to this discussion of why do this and, you know, how will this help, especially directed to Nancy Heller's questions. I think one of the outcomes of the housing production plan, the, Nancy Daly, sorry.
Yeah.
My sister's name is Nancy, it's good to know. And the most difficult and controversial part would be the identification of sites, both town-owned sites and privately-owned sites. But I think what the housing production plan can do, as Roger alluded to, is identify areas where the town might look more favorably on mixed use and mixed-income development because they might be some of our commercial areas where there are already retail, one-story buildings that might support two or three stories of development. We might be able to, maybe it would involve changing the zoning, but it might change the zoning to allow moderate-scale development as opposed to the uncontrolled scale of development that the 40Bs bring. I think everyone agrees that we're fine with seeing affordable and mixed-income housing developed. The problem we all have with 40Bs is we have no control over their height and their density. We may be able to set some guidelines that would say we would be interested in seeing a three- or four-story building where we currently have a one-story building with adequate space and parking and not in the middle of a historic residential neighborhood, but on one of our commercial streets. And that might steer developers to look at places, or existing property owners, to look at opportunities to redevelop sites that are, in some ways, underutilized. So it sort of creates an intermediate ground between doing nothing and having the market dictate where 40Bs go. And, you know, and the town could identify one of its own properties, as we've already done at Kendall Crescent, the Webster Street parking lot.
And Fisher.
And direct it to be rental housing.
Steve, since you're here, I want to say you missed a compliment I gave you earlier. I was updating everyone on devotion school, and I said I thought that all the architects' comments in relation to the design had been very helpful.
That's my morning job, this is my evening job. In between hours, that's my day job. So thank you.
Selectman Franco.
So I know you, Roger, mentioned the strategic asset plan that we're currently engaged in trying to kick off. I wonder if you could sort of more further develop your thoughts about why it's inappropriate, not advisable, to let that process conclude and then filter in the results, particularly in regards to town properties that may be primed, appropriate for mentioning in the housing production plan?
It's a matter of priorities, I think. And it's a discussion and a decision that's got to be collectively made, hopefully with some consensus, that normally that would be the case. And if the answer to the question is, is the market pressures and what we're seeing with 40B so great of a concern to the town, not so much on the affordable housing production side, but on the intrusion and inappropriate development in established neighborhoods aspect of this, then that's, the horse is leaving the barn. And if we have all this done for the spring town meeting, a lot of things could happen and will happen in the marketplace even in that period of time. So to sort of put it in the harness of another set of timelines, while logical, probably makes this investment not very fruitful.
Selectman Heller?
I just wanted to reiterate something that Linda Hamlin said about town meeting. I, when developing this warrant article, my co-petitioner and I spoke to a lot of people, I spoke to a lot of people in various parts of town. And I think people are at the point where they want to see something, you know, that they support affordable housing, but they just don't want it, you know, in a way that it's so ghastly and in, you know, tearing down beautiful old homes or using up, you know, land space that's used for recreational purposes, that kind of thing. And so I do think town meeting meant it when they voted for this. And I think that it's incumbent upon us, and I, again, I think you've done a great job of trying to meet the challenge and come up with something that will make the process worth it and work in the end.
Okay, are we ready for a vote? So I'm going to move the authorization of the filing of the DHCD consultant grant application to fund the housing production plan consultant. And implicit in that vote is an instruction to the planning department to start working not only on this grant, but on the RFP. So it's, this board's commitment to move, start moving forward on this process. So with that said, do you need?
Nope.
Okay. So with that said, all those in favor, Selectman Daly?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Selectman Green has dropped off.
Oh, okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Okay, the town administrator is going to be leaving. So we're on our own.
Yeah, plenty more, sir.
Okay, thank you. I do need help up here. So we have a couple of license, we have a few license hearings and a public, a public hearing on a. hearing on a common vitular and alcohol license. But first is a food vendor license, the question of approving the application of RRG Group Inc. doing business as Square Market, Richard Nassar, owner for a food vendor license.
Good evening, how are you?
Sir, why don't you introduce yourself?
My name is Richard Nassar. I'm from Westwood. We just acquired, it used to be seven eleven on sixteen thirty-three Beacon Street.
It's in Washington Square.
In Washington Square. We're keeping the same use, just changing the name and adding a few things.
Is it still going to be a convenience store though?
Yes.
It'll have milk and whatever?
Yeah, a convenience store.
Okay.
So you're going to have some sandwiches?
Sandwiches, you know.
Breakfast stuff?
Yep. Small items and, you know, convenience stuff for the neighborhood.
The two AM close caught my attention. Have we heard from any town meeting members or butters who may have expressed concern in writing or...
I will ask...
It would have been in the packet if we had received correspondence.
Right, right.
Two AM is pretty strange for a type of thing.
It's what the, it's what the seven eleven had.
Oh, really? Okay. Are you really actually planning on staying open till two AM?
Yep.
And do you do a lot of business in the...
Well, I heard they do a lot of business, so.
Okay.
It's my bedtime.
We're going to try it out, so.
Yeah. I'm never awake late enough to know.
There's a lot of restaurants and stuff, you know, bars.
Um, this isn't a public hearing, but I'll, if there's any members of the public who would like to speak for or against this application, I'll more than willing to listen. I don't see any. Any other discussion from the board?
No, I will just say it's my neighborhood and I, I've just been no problem with the seven eleven there, so if these guys are continuing, I, I never realized they were open that late. I haven't heard any complaints.
So, there's, there's no application for a packaged store license, a license to sell alcohol. Are you planning on expanding to that in the future?
Yeah.
No.
Okay, so the building commissioner has no objection. There's a positive report from the health department. The police department sees no reason to deny that request, so the application appears to be in order. So with that, I will move approval, the application of RRG Group Inc., DBA Square Market, Richard Nassar, owner for a food vendor license at sixteen thirty-three Beacon Street. All those in favor? Sleckman Daly?
Aye.
Sleckman Franco?
Aye.
Sleckman Heller?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Good luck.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, the next item is the question of approving the application of Pete's Operating Company Inc., DBA Pete's Coffee and Tea. David Berwick, CEO, holder of a common vitular license at eleven fifty-four Boylston Street for outside seating for nine, three tables, three seats each. Mr. Barnowski. Thank you. Chairman.
Members of the board, my name is Adam Barnowski, Law Office of Robert Allen, three hundred Washington Street here in Brookline Village. It is a relatively simple request for outdoor seating. As you can tell, we have, are proposing three tables on the Boylston-facing property line with three seats apiece. There will be two umbrellas that are located, you can tell the location, there are two, there are two dots there. Besides for that, there's going to be no, there will be no other changes to the overall operation of, of the building. There was a bit of a reduction in the indoor seating. I think we had initially applied for twenty-seven seats when we first came before you, but ended up having, if I can get the final tally here, less than that. So there shouldn't be much of an impact on parking, traffic, et cetera. Happy to answer any, any questions the board might have, but it is a relatively straightforward proposal.
One thing I noted is the building commissioner has recommended that the chairs with their back to Boylston Street be removed from each table, which would bring this down to six seats.
Yes.
Do you have a problem with that?
We don't have a problem with it. I, I did notice the building commissioner's remarks and I, I think that there is a concern as to where the property line ends and where the public way.
Right, that's what he mentioned.
And certainly we don't want to be in a position where any of the chairs are, are within the public way. What we are trying to do before we go, we do have to go before the planning board for design review, and we're trying to get a, a survey that shows exactly where this line is. And if the board would be so inclined to, to, to vote the seating in with the condition that it had final approval, we've worked with the town administrator and have final approval with the building department, if, if the board would be so inclined to vote for that. Certainly if we, if we can't, if we can't, if we can't meet their, their expectations and show that the three seats would not be within the public way, we'd be fine going with, with the six seat option.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a little confused because what I'm looking at is a hedge and a, that seems to identify the end of the property. And are we talking about tables on the street side of that hedge?
No, no. Let me see if I can show you with a cursor here. So this area of the property, this is where the tables will be, and this is all private property. It's currently bushes right here and there's a curve right here.
Oh, so it's where the bushes are?
That's correct.
Right.
Oh, I see, okay.
It's by that window. That in the picture says Starbucks.
But you're pulling the bushes out to have a seating area?
That's correct. In, in the packet, eleven, eleven-nine shows what the, what the rendering looks like, both from the top and the side view.
I mean, frankly, I question who wants to sit out by Route nine with, without even the bushes to screen you? But I guess that's an aesthetic judgment that I'll...
So I just want to confirm that the sidewalk is not going to be obstructed. This is entirely on what you think is private property. It may be hanging on to a little bit of the, the public way, but we're not going to have an issue with handicapped accessibility or pedestrians being able to get down.
No, no. We're, we're, we're trying to make it so that there is no overhang of the public way. Currently, it looks like there, there might be by a few inches, but we want to make sure that that doesn't happen as well.
But if, if the tables and chairs are going where the bushes are, are you, are you saying that that inner part there is sidewalk?
I'm sorry, by, which part do you mean by inner part?
Well, there's a car here and then there's a green lawn, green lawn.
Yep.
And then there's pavement.
Yes.
And what is that pavement?
So this, this pavement right here is, is the public way and the, the tables and chairs will be going right where this cursor is. So the, these bushes?
Right.
And this green area here will be removed and replaced by tables.
Right. And so that's going to be some sort of patio?
That's correct. Yes, that, that will, that will be a, a concrete patio.
So anyone who, who wanted to get by, you're saying in terms of handicapped accessibility, would go on that pavement part? I can't tell whether that, whether those bushes go all the way up to the building, whether there's something in between the building and the bushes.
There's not currently, the, the bushes are flush against the building, but they will be removed.
Okay, alright.
So, help me with some language.
I think there's some members of the public here to speak on this.
Oh, yes, okay. Were, are there any members of the public who wish to speak?
Could I ask one more question?
Sure, definitely.
You said that this would be twenty-two seats. Oh...
That's what they're currently licensed for.
Three tables, nine seats, you're saying you're, that, that you're amenable to doing only...
Well, the, the, what Attorney Barnowski was, was suggesting is that we make it subject to the final review of the, of the building commissioner. And there's a question of exactly where the line is.
Right.
Which is going to be resolved in the next phase of the process. So, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm personally willing to give them nine if, you know, if it's all...
I think we should give them six with an additional three seats.
If approved.
To be possible if approved by the building commissioner.
Okay, that's a good way to construct it. So, so the motion would be...
Did we have members of the public who wanted to speak?
No, no.
Yeah, I, I, yeah.
I don't think so.
Okay. This is, speak now or forever, hold your peace. Okay, so I will, so the motion will be for three tables, two seats each, with an additional seat if approved by the building commissioner.
Additional three seats. So we're doing outside seating for six, three tables, two seats each with an additional three seats possible if approved.
If approved by the building commissioner. And then the, the, the building commissioner is also recommending two additional conditions. The applicant shall maintain seven feet of vertical clearance from the public sidewalk to the lowest point of the umbrella, so you don't have to duck if you're walking by. And the applicant shall agree with all recommendations resulting from the design review process. Okay, so that is the motion. All those, do you have that, Kate? Okay. All those in favor, Sleckman Daly?
Aye.
Sleckman Franco?
Aye.
Sleckman Heller?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, and the, the next is a public hearing, common vitular, outside seating, entertainment, and all kinds alcohol license for Waxies Brookline LLC, doing business as Waxies for a common vitular license at ten thirty-two Beacon Street. Why don't you introduce yourself and...
Good evening. Attorney Frank Spillane of Foxborough, Massachusetts here for Waxies Brookline LLC. Also with me this evening is Paul McKenna and Ashok Patel, who are two of the owners, as well as Alfred Karbeck, who is the director of operations. Waxies Brookline LLC is a domestic and reliability company. It was organized December of last year, known as Waxies, proposing at ten thirty-two Beacon Street for a new restaurant, alcohol beverage annual license, as well as a common vitular license and an entertainment license. Currently Waxies has seven locations in five states, three right here in Massachusetts and Foxborough, Lexington and Woburn, as well as up in Keene, New Hampshire, down in Connecticut, Plainville, Connecticut, as well as Fort Lauderdale, Florida, and San Antonio, Texas. It's a modern Irish restaurant bar that serves freshly prepared Irish and American food. The premises that we're asking for licenses, we're going to look at one oh three two Beacon Street, which is an old Lincoln local business district. It's two levels. The ground level is approximately thirty-one hundred square feet, which will contain the restaurant, bar area, kitchen area, and a private dining area with a one-sex bathroom. There's also a patio outside at the ground level of approximately nine hundred and thirty-eight square feet, which is located on private property, is not on the town property. As you can see, it's fenced. There is a view from inside, all the windows right there, and there will be no smoking signs will be posted throughout that area. The main entrance is through the patio into the restaurant. There is a second entrance, so after the main entrance through the patio, there's also a rear exit from the private dining room in the rear of the facility, as well as a fourth exit from the ground level from the kitchen area. The basement is also approximately thirty-one hundred square feet, which will contain the men's and women's bathrooms for the restaurant. Also located down there will be the private offices, coolers, freezers, storage areas, as well as mechanical and employees' bathroom located down there without access from the public. There is one delivery entrance at the rear for the basement. The seating capacity in the restaurant, there's a hundred and twenty-eight seats within the restaurant and forty-eight out on the patio, which is twelve tables of four to the total capacity. Inside and out, it's a hundred and seventy seats. The applicant does have a lease with the property owner at this time, and they did purchase the assets from the prior tenant with cash. There will be no pledging of the license if it is approved. There is some extensive renovations going on. Within the first floor, there will be a total remodeling of the restaurant area for an Irish theme, as well as all the kitchens, ceiling, all the walls will be extensively remodeled. The basement is also going through extensive remodeling. There will be a second stairway built, which will lead down to the men's and women's bathrooms. Again, also, there'll be a total remodeling of the entire basement, including refurbishing of, an updating of all the plumbing and the electrical down there. The facade is also going through some repairs and all that is moving through the appropriate approvals with the town. We hope to have, if this is approved, opening date sometime in October of this year. As the application indicates, we're asking for Ashok Patel, who is a part owner in here this evening, to be the manager on the local license. He's a former manager on the local license with the Waxies of Carls up in Woburn, Mass. And he's both TIPS certified and EAS certified as a crown manager certification. Oh, I'm sorry. As I indicated previously, there will be some offices down the basement, although we do anticipate that either prior to opening or shortly thereafter, we'll be coming forward with a new manager for the site. But Mr. Patel will be the manager of record, approved tonight, and will be there forty hours a week when opened, if we don't change that prior to opening. We anticipate a full and part-time staff of between fifty and seventy-five employees, roughly sixty, depending on how many part-time employees they have and full times. As I indicated, the food deliveries, as well as beverage deliveries will be at the rear of the building, where there's easy access and stairs down the bulk of the basement and access to the first floor. Deliveries we anticipate to be between eight AM and ten AM, Monday, Wednesday and Fridays. There will be no deliveries prior to eight AM at this location. Our management staff is certified for food safety and alcohol service, and there'll be a new odor control system installed at this location as well. They will also comply with all the town bylaws with regard to artificial trans fats, et cetera. We have applied for the hours of operations for the food service and alcohol beverages for food from eight AM to two AM, Monday through Sunday. for food from eight AM to two AM, Monday through Sunday, and alcohol from ten AM to two. As I indicated, the bathrooms will be located in the basement with stairs, although there is a bathroom on the first floor, which is uncap accessible. We hope that this establishment will be a good neighbor for all the local residents and other commercial endeavors. They hope to become part of the community, as they have with all the other communities. The management will be available to respond to any issues that may occur, and will hopefully address them as quickly and properly as possible. They operate against seven other Waxies, and they hope to be launching three more this year. Their operations are closely supervised, as Alfred can attest, and well managed, and serving of alcohol is secondary to their primary serving of the food services. One of their policies has to do with a safe service of alcohol policy. All employees are required to sign an acknowledgement that they have received it, reviewed it, and understand the policy and the consequences that will occur if there are any violations that occur. All employees will participate in a TIPS or other type of alcohol training program. They'll have to be TIPS certified prior to working. All managers and alternative managers also receive those, and there will be in-person training, not online. They also maintain copies of all employees certifications. And they also have a proud manager on-site all the time. Mr. Patel is certified at this time. They will also have procedures with regard to controlling trash removal, litter, et cetera, on-site, and also try to do all trash pickup during normal working hours. Right now, I'd just like to ask Mr. Carnbeck, the operator, director of operations at Waxies, just to speak briefly about some of their procedures, if that's all right?
Sure.
Thank you, Alfred Carnbeck, director of operations. We have instilled policies as far as all the employees when they are hired. We talk about responsible vending. They must acknowledge that we have the conversation with them, sign an acknowledging page that goes into their file. All managers that are hired as well go through extensive orientation. We talk about responsible vending and responsible alcohol service. The intent for this restaurant is a newer, lighter, fair, eclectic menu, as opposed to the heavier comfort food that's usually affiliated with Irish restaurants. So we think it'd be a great addition to the community.
Selectman Daly?
I, I actually have a real problem with this application because you have a very bad record in Foxborough with respect to liquor law violations. And when I hear that Mr. Patel is not even actually going to be the manager, so we don't even have someone to talk to about, you know, what, what the standards would be and so forth, that, I mean, you tell me you have training in place, but it does not seem to have been successful, given the long string of violations you've had in Foxborough.
The violations in Foxborough were...
Overserving primarily, I believe.
And also to intoxicated persons.
Yeah.
Yeah, over serving.
Overserving, but also underage. Oh, underage too.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, we, we, we take our liquor laws very seriously here in Brookline. We have a large student population. That area down there, and I imagine you're interested in that site because you know it's close to a major university. But having an establishment in there that is kind of very casual about their handling of these matters in regard to the liquor laws is certainly, does not give me much confidence.
During that, since that last violation, I've come on board with the company. The previous violations were prior to my employment with the company. We're very steadfast. We've not had any problems at all since the last violation in Foxborough. The intent is to be a good neighbor and be very diligent to make sure that there aren't any violations in the Brookline area.
So are you aware that there have been some noise issues with the previous establishment at this location?
Yes, I was aware of that, yes, yes, sir.
So this is something that this board has heard about several times with the previous restaurant. It's been a real problem in the neighborhood, and I, I think there are several members of the community who are going to speak about that this evening. Fair warning, I'm going to attach, propose to attach a condition to the license in regards to the patio and requiring that all operations end at eleven PM. So that'll be up for discussion on this board. I want to dig in on the alcohol license for a second and find out if Mr. Patel has completed a in-person TIPS course at this point?
Yes, he has.
Okay.
Yeah, but he's, they're saying that he's not even going to really be the manager.
I agree.
I would like to hear from the person who is actually going to be the manager and, you know, know that someone who is familiar with the liquor laws is going to, to really be the manager there. Not somebody that's actually managing one of your other establishments, that you're just sticking their name on this.
We're currently interviewing candidates for general manager of Brookline as well, which is a ongoing process in the business. I'll have an active role in supervising the area, the restaurant as well. And Mr. Patel and myself will both have TIPS certified.
But when we issue a liquor license, it's a, it's a degree of trust between the establishment that's going to provide the, the service in this board, having faith that it's going to be done in a responsible way. And because you're not prepared to bring forward a manager who's actually going to be the operational manager, I'm not going to issue a liquor license. I'm going to no vote on that.
Yeah, me too.
Mr. Patel is, will be on-site at the opening. If we haven't brought forward another manager for your approval prior to that. He's been a manager previously on the Woburn Waxies, which had no violations at all during his time there. So he is capable and willing to step in there until such time as another manager came forward. On the application, a manager has to be listed. They listed him knowing that at some future date they would be bringing a new name in front of this board for approval, and we want to be upfront and honest with this board with regard to that. So if we haven't had a new manager approved by this board, he will be there full-time at that site at the opening if approved.
Well, he couldn't open. I know there are some members of the public who would like to speak, so...
Hi there, Speed Keynes. I live on Carlton Street, and my property abuts the rear of the establishment. And I've also been speaking to a lot of the neighbors about this project, and there's some level of concern. One, one thing that I wanted to bring up was the, the noise issues regarding the building itself. We've had issues in the past with the building where Whole Foods is, and also this particular building regarding equipment on the roof. And prior tenants in both buildings have agreed to a condition that I'm proposing. I've distributed it to the board regarding, I'll just read it briefly. All outdoor compressors, HVAC units, and kitchen ventilation and odor control systems, including those on the roof, must satisfy Brookline's noise control bylaw and regulations. An independent acoustical engineer acceptable to the building department shall be employed by applicant to verify compliance of existing units and installation of any additional units. That's something that we've had in the past, and I think it's worked out well, actually, for the applicants because before we did this, there was an issue with the adjoining building, and they had to take the equipment out. So making them aware at the start of our bylaw, our noise bylaw, and making sure the equipment is right saves them a lot of money and a lot of aggravation for people in the neighborhood. I've discussed this condition with the applicant council, and they've agreed to its inclusion in the conditions for the license. One other point I want to make, and I know there are other people who have other things to raise, has to do with the entertainment license. I'm very concerned about the audio and visual aspects on the patio, and I think there clearly needs to be a carve-out for the entertainment license to not include any exterior or outdoor space, including the patio, at any time. I don't think it's appropriate for that area. It's a residential community, and, you know, we, actually, the, the Japanese restaurant on the corner at St. Mary's Street had speaker systems, and they had to take them out. So again, this is something we, we would hope that the board would consider, you know, having this carve-out if they choose to grant the entertainment license, so that the neighborhood is protected. It sounds like there's going to be a lot of people here, and things could easily, you know, get pretty, well, not very good for the neighborhood.
Mr. Keynes, to the best of your knowledge, the private, the patio has had seats in prior incarnations. Have there been speakers out there?
No, there haven't been.
So this, so that would be a continuation of the way it was, if we would do that?
Exactly, and the reason I'm raising it is that it came up with the Japanese restaurant on the corner, and it came out of nowhere. You know, all of a sudden, there were speakers out there. And it wasn't part of their license, and they had to remove them. So I just want to raise this now, so it doesn't become an issue down the road. Again, the other, one of the other concerns that I've had is, has to do with the rear of the building in terms of, in the evening, when they're closed. I mean, you know, I think things have to be wrapped up back there, and that it not be noisy, and a lot of, you know, broken glasses, they throw things into the dumpster. That has to be wrapped up earlier in the evening, in two o'clock, I hope.
Yeah, I, I remember there was, that issue has come before us at that very site in prior incarnations.
Yeah, I mean, you can hear the bottles being broken at one or two in the morning as they've been thrown into the dumpster. I want to raise that as well.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Joel Feingold. I'm one of the trustees of the 1038 Beacon Street Condominium Association. And I have a handout which wasn't distributed, so if it's okay, I'll approach and pass it out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. So, I'm going to get back to my phone. I certainly won't belabor some of the points that have been made before. I've been a resident now and at 1038 for almost seven years, and a trustee on the association for about six. And we had such a dramatic change when the Mission Cantina, which was the last iteration, took over this space from previously. It was really a difficult and rude awakening for us, which we don't want to repeat. We went from a good neighbor to a very difficult neighbor. So what I tried to do with this little note is outline some of the types of policies or carve-outs or conditions on the licenses, which we hope will be codified, so that if there is a problem, the responding officer at one o'clock in the morning can see the license on the wall and know what is and isn't permitted. Because this is part of what, what occurred with the last restaurant. The liquor license went till two o'clock, and even though the patio was only for eleven, they ran it until two o'clock, and the police would arrive, and not have any document in front of them, which gave them any power to enforce it. And it took a period of at least a month or six weeks to get that under control, which was just completely unacceptable. So anyway, just to run these down really quickly. Outdoor dining, not before ten AM, and to end at eleven. And our belief is that ending at eleven doesn't mean last call at eleven. It means give the last call early enough so the customers have time to drink up, and the patio can be closed down at eleven, so that it's quiet, which is actually consistent with the neighborhood. And that's one of the things that perhaps I would stress here. This neighborhood is amazing. It's got such a vibrance during the day, and yet it's great to live in if you're a professional or, you know, an intern over in the medical area, because it's reasonably quiet by eleven o'clock, and you can get a decent night's sleep. It really is a, it's, it's a unique and wonderful place to live, so long as we can maintain that. The, we'd, we'd love it, as I have mentioned, to see the dining hours for outside written on the common vitual and alcoholic beverage licenses. My colleague here who mentioned no music or electronic amplification and so forth outside, we feel that's quite important. Several of the residents in our building have expressed that to me. And we have experience with that, whether it's a buster sitting with a guitar on one of the benches, or whether it's one of the little groups that sets up for the various charity walks, which go up and down Beacon Street. So we know what that is. This isn't an idle request from no information. We have concerns in the neighborhood about outdoor smoking. Because it's a densely populated neighborhood, if they're smoking in, say, the back service area, that's immediately wafting into people's windows. And so what we'd like to see, if possible, is a no smoking anywhere on the property. The petitioner did say there'd be no smoking on the patio, which is, is the law incorrect. Something which wasn't mentioned is we'd like to make sure there are no paper products used outside, because they tend to blow away and cause a litter problem. We'd like to make sure it's real stainless and cloth, which is nicer for the customers and also superior for the neighborhood. With respect to my colleague's comment about the noise. We understand bottles break, but if they can get bagged up inside and reasonably placed in the dumpster, or something like that, as opposed to, you know, heave-ho with a massive crash at two AM, that, that's a quality of life issue, and managing that would be important. Very appreciative of the commitment not to have deliveries before eight AM. That was one of the tick marks here. One of the difficulties in St. Mary's Court is sometimes drivers don't know what they're getting into, and they block it, which is a problem if there's a prob, a problem if there's an emergency vehicle needs access. It's a problem if someone's trying to get out to pick up their kid at school or leave to get to work on time in the morning. So it's really critical that they work with their delivery drivers to make sure that they don't block that, that they don't do turnarounds behind people's residences and so forth. We'd appreciate it if the board does approve the licenses that Waxies create, and it won't be expensive, but we'd like them to create and maintain at their expense a sign which says, basically demarcates the property line with the parking area behind 1038, and requests that the trucks don't stage in it, which we've seen a lot, and don't do turnarounds in it, which means the beeps are interfering with people, you know, louder than they always do. And then the last thing, which, Selectman Nancy?
Daly.
Daly, what Selectman Daly brought up is, it's really a neighborhood of restaurants that also serve alcohol. It's not a neighborhood of bars that also serve food. And so we would request that they maintain a very high degree of vigilance about who they serve. We really don't want fifty underage kids in there getting drunk, or even ten, and then falling out into the streets at two o'clock or two thirty in the morning.
Or I would say any.
I think our standards are a little higher than yours. We don't even want one.
You know, then, then what, then what happens is they're out on the streets, and they're walking through Cottage Farm, dropping F-bombs on the way back, and really, we just don't want to see that happen. So that's, that's the litany. We're very appreciative of the, the board taking some time to listen to these sorts of concerns. We're very appreciative of the board taking some time to listen to these sorts of concerns. And if I can turn and just speak to WAXEs for a minute, we're waiting for a restaurant to come in there. There is no good hamburger on Lower Beacon Street right now. There is no good chicken plums. So it's not like we don't want the restaurants there, but we want the restaurant there doing it right. And doing it right is really critical to us. Because if it's not done right, then we're going to be back down here having a battle. So, you know, know that, know that going in and, you know, from my own personal perspective, I love, in my business, and I have to write a lot of what would be thought of as contracts or letters of agreement. And I've learned that if you get it right the first time and you put down what you mean in plain English so everybody understands where the limits are, where the fences are, it really makes for better neighbors. It's, it sounds trite, but it's the truth. So I hope that we can do that on this.
Okay. Can I ask that you give a copy of your list to council for the restaurant?
Mr. Franco.
Good evening. My name is Jim Franco, town meeting member from Precinct One. I'd like to reiterate what Joel just said. The St. Mary's commercial district is quite important to everyone in the neighborhood. We'd love it. We're looking forward to, to having another establishment. We just want to draw some, make some rules, make sure they understand. We think it's going to be a good place to do business because not only do you have Brookline residents who love to go out in the evening, but you've got the additional Fenway Park crowd, the BU crowd, the parents of BU people, et cetera. That said, there were problems and some of these were mentioned before. I'll be very brief. The patio serving, we would love to see a condition placed on that outdoor patio serving to stop serving at 10:00 so that the cleanup can be completed by 11:00. Specifically, we would like to make sure that the applicant understands that they should not allow, just because they're going to end the serving outdoors, that they're not going to allow folks to purchase product inside and then consume outside. We, that would be, that would be noisy. Secondly, we're not sure about the, I guess the prior establishment did have a 2:00 AM closing, but we're, you know, the board has been very careful about, I believe in the past, 2:00 AM closings and hopefully you'll consider that carefully. The last occupant, Mission Cantina, had problems at the rear of, of the building with evening cleanup. And at one point, they agreed to do some of that cleanup well before the 2:00 AM closing and hope that that can be encouraged this time. But we have to make sure that, as a, that, that the applicant understands that this license will be reviewed annually and that complaints of rear entry noise and cleanup noise will be, will be considered at license renewal. That's about all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gordon.
Yes, thank you. Neil Gordon, Precinct One Town Meeting Member. I will be redundant but brief in summary. So we know this has been a restaurant location before. Beacon Street Tavern has been there, Mission Cantina has been there. As has been expressed, there have been good neighbors at that location and less than good neighbors at that location. We don't yet know which one WAXEs will be. So the particular concerns to the neighborhood, as has been stated, late night use of the porch and related noise, post-closing cleanup noise in the front and in the back facing St. Mary's Court, and patrons when leaving, especially late at night, continuing their conversations in the surrounding neighborhoods in Precinct One and I suspect extending into other precincts as well.
I don't know whether we can legislate people continuing conversations after they leave the establishment.
Well, it goes to, it goes to the issue of how inebriated some of those patrons might be at the time that they leave the establishment. So I'm not here to negotiate any, any particular specifics, just to reiterate the concerns of the neighbors and ask for appropriate restrictions on the license. Thank you very much.
Ma'am.
Hi, I'm CJ Laurie Elliott and I would just like to make one quick point. I'm going to show you where I've lived for over thirty-five years. In this building right here, I just, in case you're not familiar, that is a mostly residential building that is right next door, which is why these noise issues and the crashing bottles and people throwing up in the alleys are such an issue. Because it's not like the neighbors are blocks away. The neighbors are practically attached to the building. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Caines for reducks.
Second appearance. There are just two points I wanted to mention that haven't been covered. It occurred to me that I think are important. One is that in discussing the carve out for the entertainment license in the hallway, applicant mentioned, well, could we have TV sets out there? And I think they just need to understand that if you do decide to not grant an entertainment license outside, that would mean they can't have TVs even without sound. Because we, you know, this is not a party, we don't want a party scene there and, and...
What if they came before us for a special permit because the Red Sox were in the World Series?
Well, they can watch inside. Or they can go to Fenway Park.
They can get tickets.
And the second point is, I don't know if many, the board members realize it, but there are little alley openings in 1038 next door that enable you to walk as a pedestrian back into the parking area.
Really?
Yeah.
I didn't realize that.
Yeah, and I think that's what some of the neighbors are referring to, that, that they're concerned about people going through those alleys. I was going to point them out.
Just right here, the walkway at either side of the building.
Huh. Interesting.
So I, I want, I, you know, I think it's important that the applicant know that they have to police that rear area because it's very easy for people, if they can't use the porch, to go out back. I mean, you know, if they want to continue drinking outside. I just wanted to bring that up as well. Thank you.
Yes, sir. How can you help us allay the neighborhood's concerns?
Attorney's plea against the applicant. With regard to the letter from the trustees, we're fine with all of those things. We don't have a problem with, at this point, closing the outdoor patio at 11:00. We feel strongly that we're going to be a good neighbor and once we prove that to the neighborhood and to this board, that we can always come back and try to apply for later hours. At this point, we're very comfortable with that 11:00 closing time. Also, with regard to no entertainment outside, we're fine with that too. And talking with the gentleman outside, you know, we were just talking about different things, about music, entertainment, TVs and all that. We're fine with nothing outside, out there. The only issue with regard to that letter has to do with no cleanup or other noise in the rare part of it past 11:00 PM. Since the restaurant will be open after 11:00 PM, there will be some noise. We'll keep it at a minimal. With regard to taking out trash, cleaning up, you know, closing up the facility after 11:00. But I think saying no noise at all there, it just won't be realistic and we're trying to be realistic with this community and with this board. But we will commit to keeping the noise back there to a minimum and acknowledging that when trash is taken out after 11:00, it will be done with minimal noise and not throwing the bottles in as, as described. We will have no smoking throughout the facility. That, that'll be fine inside and out. We have no problems with that whatsoever. And if required, we will put up a sign. I don't know where we could put it. With regard to private property, no turnaround, do not block. With regard to the building next door, I think in working with the building commissioner and the neighbors, we could, you know, figure something out there. So we don't have any problems with any of these things because we feel that we're going to prove ourselves to be good neighbors with regard to the town, the community and our directors and butters. Just briefly with regard to issues that have occurred at the WAXEs in Foxborough. Again, there are six other locations. There have never been any violations. In the Foxborough, there had been a number of violations and we acknowledge that. A lot of them had to do with a prior co-owner with that facility. That was the manager on that site who was eventually bought out and removed as manager there. And since that time, especially since Paul McKenna has been involved, we haven't had any issues at the Foxborough location. So we hope you take that into consideration also. But with regard to the restrictions that were, you know, discussed, we're fine, especially with closing the patio at 11:00.
What, what I'm going to suggest is that we, normally, we would have the manager speak to us and I would suggest we do that and we, we operate as if Mr. Patel is going to be opening and be the operational manager. And we know that if there's a change in that, that new manager's going to have to appear before us and they can't open unless Mr. Patel's on site or the new manager's on site. So we, we, we operate as if Mr. Patel is going to be the manager. Because I don't see any other...
So let me introduce a wrinkle into this.
Okay.
A three of our alcohol regulations require that the majority of a, that the manager on an application cannot represent a corporation that's got a majority of non-citizens. It seems to be the case here. So issuing the license would be in violation of our regulations.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
What the regulations and state law require is that a majority of the managing members of an LLC be US citizens. There's one managing member, which is Mr. Patel, so that meets the requirement.
The regulation reads, "No license for sale of alcoholic beverages shall be issued to any person who is not, at the time of his or her application, a citizen of the United States or to any agent of any such person or to any corporation, a majority of whom's directors are resident aliens."
That's correct. We're not talking about individuals here. We're talking about LLC. And with regard to an LLC, the directors are the managers, managing members, and in this case, there's, there's just one, Mr. Patel. So that meets the requirement.
Well, I think we need an opinion from town council on that matter.
Um, well, we could hold the vote till we get an opinion. We could do a vote contingent. So what's the consensus?
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm at this point not going to vote for it. I will be voting against. I applaud your candor in admitting that Mr. Patel is not going to be the actual manager for, for very long. But frankly, given the many violations in Foxborough, I want to talk to someone who really is going to be the manager and make sure we have an understanding about, because I think many of the incidents you're hearing from neighbors go hand in hand with over-serving or with serving minors. And so I, I really want some reassurance that, that, you know, that this is not going to be the situation at this location. You're talking about kind of, by our standards in Brookline, a pretty big establishment. A lot of patrons coming in and out and really the potential for a lot of noise and disruption. I would suggest that we continue this to our next meeting.
I'd like to, I have a few concerns that I'd like to express first.
Sure.
I heard you say that, and the neighbors complained that the Mission Cantina, you know, threw the bottles into the dumpster. That signifies to me that they're not being recycled. And I want to know what your position about that is and whether you intend to recycle the materials that you can.
I think we actually have a bylaw in Brookline that they have to recycle.
Yes, I would, yes, they will be recycling any materials that can be recycled.
So you're not going to be throwing the bottles into the dumpster?
No. No, not if the bottles are recycled, they will be recycled.
Okay. The other thing I'm concerned about is if the closing hours, and did I hear you right? You would agree to closing hour at this point? It's 11:00 for everything?
For the patio. I'm sorry if I misspoke.
Okay. But if you have a closing hour that's 11:00 for the patio, I would not want you to be taking the trash out after 11:00. You'll have to store it in the building and wait until the next morning when people are up and, you know, because if you're going outside with that trash, I know you're going to be making noise and you don't mean to. I'm not saying you're trying to be, you know, contrarian or anything. It's just that it's, it's the nature of it. It's noisy, it's bulky, you know? And so I would want your assurance that you're not going to take the trash out or take anything out into that alley after 11:00. Because that's when the problem comes. People are trying to sleep and you're in this very residential neighborhood. So that's another one of my concerns.
I would, I just want to ask though the neighbors, if anyone knows, I mean, the Beacon Street Tavern that was there before, we never got complaints about them taking the trash out. And I don't know, were they not open as late or were they just more respectful when they took the trash out? Does anyone want to come up to the microphone and comment on that? Because I, I grant you the bottles are very noisy, but I think asking them to keep other food, kind of trash, inside the building could be a health department violation. So I'm not sure that that's something that we could do. I mean, we could move the closing hour up, you know, if you think it's a problem, but I don't, I don't think...
Yes, sir. Previous restaurants, particularly the most recent one, tended to throw out their wine bottles at about 3:00 AM, all in one big batch. And whether it was going into the dumpster or a recycle bin, it makes the same crash.
But how about the prior tenant, Beacon Tavern? We didn't hear noise issues expressed to us. What was, what's the difference? What was the difference?
There, it's a matter of threshold and whether somebody can get here to the meeting to, you know, complain about it. For example, Whole Foods Market has an exemption at 7:00 AM to make noise and if a forklift it beeps. So from 7:00, 7:30 every day, we have to listen to a forklift that beeps. I haven't been able to get here to make, you know, the complaint about and so forth. And I've worked with the manager at Whole Foods. They've restricted the deliveries on Sundays and holidays. So it's more reasonable for much of the time. And we're hoping that we can do the same thing with, with the new restaurant when they come in. We can work with them.
There was some crashing probably.
Okay. Thank you.
Also, there, wherever, the only place they can probably put their dumpster is right behind their building, which is right next to our building. And we have had issues in the past with making sure that dumpsters are closed so that the smell doesn't waft up to their residents next door and so forth. So there's ongoing issues. We try and work with them as much as we can before having to come here and make a big issue out of it.
Thank you. So...
I will say that I favor most of the, I favor the conditions that have been proposed by the neighbors.
Yeah, and the fact that you've so readily accepted them is, to me, an indication that you're going to be good tenants and good neighbors and, and once you open, hopefully you won't, you won't be back here, hopefully.
We hope to resolve any issues that could arise directly with any of our neighbors. Again, you know, my concern about no trash after 11:00 is health issues. I'm not sure it's...
Well, any trash you accumulated until 11:00 could be taken out and there probably wouldn't be that much out between then and your closing. You could stick it in the refrigerator or I'm sure you'll have a large facility and, you know, people do that. That's how you, you put it in the plastic bag and you put it in there and then you don't make noise.
I think our, we'd want an opinion from our health department before we went down that road.
Yeah, I don't think you could put trash in what's...
I would be, I would be sympathetic if you were just talking about the bottles, but if you're talking about food trash, you're going to get rats and things if you've got them storing it inside, I think.
Mr. Feingold.
If, if I may, and council may have misspoken, but what I...
but what I've heard is that they would agree to the eleven o'clock on the patio-
Right.
-and perhaps come back and talk about later hours later. And that's like foreboding. It's like, agree to, agree to eleven o'clock closed and that's the end of it forever. Uh, I think that's also the town's, uh, normal, uh, outdoor dining policy as well.
Right.
So, we'd, we'd hate to see, uh, we'd, we'd consider that kind of a difficult problem if there was even a, a whiff that there might be a request for that. So, but that's, that's it for me for tonight. Thank you once again.
Yeah, I'm, I'm-
So-
Unlikely to vote for later than eleven, even down the road, I would say.
Okay. So, I, 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 this, I'm getting a sense of the board that we would like to continue the hearing based on an opinion from town council on the, um- On the A three regulation and, uh-
Well, I, I would love to hear from the real manager at that point, when you come back on August fourth.
Well, right now, we'd like to have Mr. Patel, who's the real manager of record right now. And again, if we don't come forward with a change, we'll be the manager, um, at the site when it opens. So, if we may, I'd just like to have him, uh, speak a few minutes. The reason, you know, we wanted to be open and honest with our neighbors, this board and the community with regard to our intentions throughout. And that's why we were upfront with that, that Mr. Patel will be, uh, the manager on the license initially, but we anticipate changing that. Uh, so if I may, Chairman?
So, Mr. Patel, uh, have you met with our, uh, police department, uh, go over the rules? That's what, uh, happens with a lot of our applicants?
Yes.
And, um, uh, he explained, uh, how seriously we take, uh, our alcohol regulations and the fact that we have, uh, uh, stings. And I, and I, I think this would be a, a special area for stings because of the proximity to the, to BU and, and the other colleges in the Fenway area.
Yes.
Okay. And what was some of the, the, the other special, uh, requirements that Brookline has that you haven't seen in other places?
I'd just like to thank you for taking the time to allow us to speak today. I, I fully understand everybody's concern on, uh, this whole issue of manager and, and permanent manager, temporary manager. Like the council said, we, we intend to have somebody onboard, um, fully by the time we open. And if that isn't the case, I am fully responsible to making sure that this restaurant is open, closes on time, obeyed by all the regulations allowed by, uh, regulated by the town of Brookline and the state of Massachusetts.
Did he tell you about a requirement for a notebook?
I'm sorry?
A requirement for a, uh, a notebook on site and what's supposed to be in the notebook?
What is that for?
You shouldn't give them too many clues. You, you don't, you don't know our local regulations about keeping a notebook.
No, I, I, whatever regulations you guys have on, on file, we, we will be fully complying with those regulations.
Okay. Did you talk to the, you did talk to the police department and they didn't explain this to you?
I have went in for the fingerprinting, um, as required. I have not had a one-on-one with one particular officer, which I plan to do once, once this progresses forward.
Yeah. I mean, if you were gonna be the manager, you should talk to the police department and find out about, um, these things that, you're required to keep a notebook and to keep, uh, listings of your employees and all their certifications. And, um, you're also supposed to list incidents in there if there's somebody that you think is intoxicated and you say, "We're not gonna serve you anymore" and-
I believe, uh, our corporate already has that. Boss can speak to that. Uh, we already do that at other locations as well.
Yeah. I don't really wanna hear from him. I wanna hear from the person who's gonna be running this establishment. And this, this is my concern with this application is I don't, I don't feel like, uh, you guys are really, uh, taking, uh, seriously our local concerns about the liquor laws.
I can assure you, we are taking it very seriously. One of the reasons, uh, is that we have entered into a very long-term lease with the landlord. We have, we have spent significant amount of money on engineering, design, um, even demolition, uh, that has started at the building to some level. Um, we are prepared to invest significant amount of money into the building for its longevity, structurally and cosmetically. The fact that I have not yet had one-on-one with many officers, um, should not indicate to you that I'm not serious about it. It is a matter of process for me. Uh, once, once you guys give sort of the green light, okay, we are comfortable with your approach, I am committed to sitting down with any officer, knowing all the regulations that need to be known for your, for, for, for the town of Brookline. Um, I believe what you're speaking to about the notebook is something that we already have in practice at other locations with our other managers.
Okay. So, what, what I'm gonna suggest, yeah.
Can I, uh, one more thing? Um, I noticed that the, um, report from Lieutenant Hayes is here and he has, uh, specified that we should, he, he, his recommendation is that we adopt certain stipulations uh, prior to approving the license.
Right.
And I would agree with those stipulations. I just wanna get that on the record.
Have, have you seen the stipulations from the police department? That, uh, there'd be security cameras, um, uh, anyone who looks under thirty-five be carted. Of course, uh, if, if, if there's a new manager of record or an alternative manager, needs to be approved by this board and-
Prior to opening.
Right, that's correct.
And he's also recommending a one AM closing for the interior.
Right, with the, the option later, with the track record of going to two o'clock. So, um, so- Right. Um, so what I'm gonna suggest is we continue the hearing till our next meeting, which is going to be August fourth. We'll get an A three opinion from town council. You do what, meet with, uh, Lieutenant Hayes and, uh, make sure you understand, uh, our local regulations. Or if it's not going to be you at that point, whoever it's going to be, so you can tell us what's in the notebook. You'll surely be asked. And, uh, hopefully, uh, with accepting these terms and, um, assuming we get, uh, a good opinion from town council, uh, we can move forward with this.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I think that concludes our business for tonight. Thank you.